Once again, we turn to that text. Verse four will be the text for the message. Hebrews chapter 12, verses one through four. Wherefore seeing we also are compassed to bow with so great a cloud of witnesses, let us lay aside every weight and the sin which does so easily beset us, and let us run with patience the race that is set before us. Looking unto Jesus, the Author and Finisher of our faith, who for the joy that was set before him endured the cross, despising the shame, and is set down at the right hand of the throne of God; for consider him that endured such contradiction of sinners against himself, lest you be wearied and faint in your minds. In our text for this message, he have not yet resisted unto blood striving against sin. Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the wonderful fellowship that we just had, Lord. Lord, it was a good time, it was a sweet time. Four things we need to really value and appreciate, Lord, times spent with our brothers and sisters in Christ. And now, Lord, as we return for one final message, Lord, in this series that you've had me preaching this week. Lord, I pray for those that are present, Lord. I pray for those, Lord, that will view the message later, once it's posted. Lord, I know we have some that are sick and aren't able to be here. Well, we pray for them. But, Lord, I want to see hearts changed. I want to see lives changed, Lord. And I'm talking about the church, Lord. I'm talking about those that are yours. We can't help the fact that we are where we are in time. That's just where we are, in the time of the Laodicean church of Jesus Christ. But we don't have to be Laodicean Christians. We can rise above that. You've given us the ability to do so. We have the capacity to do so. And so, Lord, I pray, Lord, as this message has spoken to me, I pray, dear God, let it speak to each one that hears it. Lord, and let us know personal, individual revival and a rededication of our lives to serving you. And I pray and ask for it in Christ's name. Amen. You have not yet resisted unto blood striving against sin. And for every one of us here, myself included, that is true in a great many ways. There's a lot of our brothers and sisters in Christ who have. That's just the truth of it. But this is the extent to which the Lord expects us to strive against sin should it become necessary. Like I say, some have, some are right now. The question is, will we? Will you? Striving against sin, context of the message. As a mortal man, the Lord Jesus Christ strove against sin all of his life. If you go over to Luke chapter four, verse one and verse 13. We're not going to go through the whole passage there of Christ's temptation in the wilderness. We just need those two verses, Luke 4:1 and then Luke 4:13. And Jesus being full of the Holy Ghost, returned from Jordan, and was led by the Spirit into the wilderness. Verse two, and we'll conclude that with there being forty days tempted of the devil, and in those days he did eat nothing, and when they were ended he afterward hungered. Verse 13. And when the devil had ended all the temptation, he departed from him for a season. He departed from him for a season. Okay, a season means a short period of time and then a return. The devil didn't leave the Lord alone after that temptation there in the wilderness. Of course, the Lord, you know, succeeded, was victorious in all of that. But he didn't leave him alone. That wasn't the end of it. Just because we don't have it written down in the record, we're told. Okay, he departed from him for a season. He came back. He kept at him. He kept at him, just the same way as he didn't want to leave you alone. The devil's incredibly consistent, folks. He's as consistent and faithful about his wickedness and his evilness as God wants you to be about your holiness and your righteousness. Devil don't quit. You know, and though the Lord was not born, we've got to remember this. Though he wasn't born with the curse of sin as we are, because his father was God, he didn't inherit that sin debt that we inherit from Adam. He was very much capable, as a man, of sinning in his flesh because he had a free will. He could have chose to sin. If not, then why bother tempting him? I've heard creatures say, "It was impossible for Jesus Christ to sin." No, it wasn't. You're nuts. Yeah, I want to tell you what. He faced every possible temptation that there was for man to be tempted with. Except he didn't sin. That's the whole point. That's what he was talking about when I, or we read this morning, where he told them, "If I had not done the works that no other man had done, they would not have sinned." And he was talking about the fact that he didn't sin when he was tempted. He never once failed. And so, they had no more cloak for their sin, no more excuse to hunt. Well, I'm not as bad as, well, I don't do it as much as, well, you know, all the excuses that are ever given for doing that which is contrary to God. He didn't have to do that. I didn't give in. Not that I wasn't tempted. I didn't give in. I did not sin. That's where he says, elsewhere in the scripture, he said, "Who convinces me of sin?" Come on, let's go toe-to-toe with me. You show me where I've sinned. Let's do it. Couldn't do it. The Lord Jesus Christ was most certainly resisted unto blood striving against sin. In fact, to the point he was willing to become sin unto blood. He couldn't have been our Savior if he hadn't been sinless. And then, you know, no guilt, no crime, no fault is okay. All willingly become sin. That we might be made the righteousness of God in him. He strove against sin, strove blood, like our apostles did. All the apostles but for John died for their testimony. They tried to kill John. That one time they tried to boil him in oil. Came out alive. I mean, I don't know what he looked like when he came out, but then they couldn't kill him, so they exiled him onto the Isle of Patmos. He died in exile on that. But while he was there, God gave him the revelation, Jesus Christ. Majority of your early Christians, you can read through the book of Acts, what happened with them. You can pick it up in things like, again, Fox's Book of Martyrs, The Martyrs' Mirror. Bloody books, horrible things that were done. I mean, you want to talk about, you want to see the depths of humanity is when you see how vile, vicious, and cruel people can be to each other. And I tell people about my experiences as a police officer in the city of Chicago. Now, when I was in the service, you know, I was trained for combat. I was trained to fight. I was on one of the military's earliest hostage rescue anti-terrorist teams. My years in the military, I want to tell you, I never saw humanity be so vile and vicious and cruel to one another as I did in the years that I worked on the streets of South Chicago. I was aghast at how vile human beings could be to one another. How little human life had as a value to people there. Thing is, we need to do no less. We need to be willing to do no, you may not have to. What a blessing, you may not have to. Many have. Many have. Sin exists in your mortal flesh. It exists in the world, and it exists in the spirit realm with the devil and his devils. Romans chapter seven, if you would please. Look at some verses here for a little bit. Romans seven, pick it up at seventeen and eighteen. Well-known passage here, Paul talking about the daily battle with your flesh. Now then, it is no more I that do it, but sin that dwelleth in me; for I know that in me, that is in my flesh, dwelleth no good thing. For to will is present with me, but how to perform that which is good I find not. Galatians chapter five. Galatians chapter five, and we're looking at verses nineteen to twenty-one. Now the works of the flesh are manifest, which are these: adultery, fornication, uncleanness, lasciviousness, idolatry, witchcraft, hatred, variance, emulations, wrath, strife, seditions, heresies, envying, murders, drunkenness, revelings, and suchlike, of the which I tell you before, as I have also told you in time past, that they which do such things shall not inherit the kingdom of God. Now, so I've talked about dying, going to hell there. Didn't say that, that won't inherit. You can be saved and do these things, and guess what? You're losing inheritance. You're losing inheritance. You're losing stuff that you could have, stuff that God intends and wants to give to you by behavior. There's a whole lot of people, "Oh, you know, I'm saved, I'm going to heaven." Yeah, you know, you want to live like the devil? You think there's not going to be a cost. There's going to be a cost in this life, there's going to be a cost in the next one. Colossians three. Colossians three, verses five and six. Mortify therefore your members. What's it mean to mortify? You know, Latin speakers? Kill it. Kill it. Mortify therefore your members, which are upon the earth. Fornication, here, that one pops up again. Uncleanness, yeah, that pops up again. Inordinate affection, that's sodomie. Evil concupiscence and covetousness, which is idolatry, there's that one again. For which things sake the wrath of God cometh on the children of disobedience. God's estimation of humanity, God's estimation of humanity is not a flattering one at all. But it is most definitely an accurate one. And the more that evil is allowed to flourish unhindered in this world, the greater and more vile it's going to be in its practice. Brother Rich and I talking earlier about how things were when we were kids. And I mean, that, that goes back a ways. Just a little bit, yeah. A little bit further for you than for me, but still, yeah. I mean, yeah, okay. It's just our history. I mean, you youngsters, you're youngsters.
Thank you.
You're youngsters. You don't know because you didn't experience it. I mean, we think about things and, you know, outside of the politics of the whole thing, you know, where we have these shootings where multiple people are being shot and murdered. And we sit there and we can't wrap our heads around it because as kids, something like that never would have come into our thoughts to even have done something like that. I mean, the worst thing that ever happened in school is, you know, you know, a couple of guys got into an argument over something stupid and somebody got a bloody nose or a fat lip. Not going to go and try to blow the school up or shoot it up. It was literally, it was a different time, folks. And the further back you go, craziness, craziness. And like I say, you know, I was aghast at the city of Chicago in the years that I worked there, that I was there. I couldn't believe the violence and the crime and the hate. And it's got to be five times worse now than it was forty years ago. But see, that's what happens when there's no consequences for evils. Evils glorify. Evils, you know, lift it up. It's incredible. You know, I mean, the bolder it gets, the more aggressive it gets, the more people are willing to do it. They know they're, oh, not going to be consequent, and, and, yew. Yep. You know, and especially in its attacks against the Lord and against his church. You know, a few years ago, you know, back when half of the United States was burning, you know, they had this, you know, big push out here about being woke and all that kind of, you know, and somebody, I don't know if you remember, somebody had taped up a sign on our sign out here, you know, calling us, you know, we're a bunch of hateful Nazis and they were going to do us in, and nothing ever came of it. Give it time. Give it time. I'm not, I'm not going to be the least bit surprised. And, you know, folks all know, I come prepared for some day somebody to try to come storming in here to hurt us. I expect it every time we come here. I expect it every time we come here. And, you know, if it happens, you know, God's will. You know, and there'll be a little bit of a boo hoo in the city of Pittsburgh for a couple of days until the next news blurb comes along. It's forgotten. Go to Ephesians six with me, chap, Ephesians six, chap, yeah. Keep saying chapter, keep saying verse here. Ephesians, chapter six, verse 12. Yeah, I'll get it right eventually. For we wrestle not against flesh and blood. It's not flesh and blood. Flesh and blood might be the means, that'll get used to do it, but that's not who's behind it. We wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this world. And there ain't another one of them that's sitting in an office behind a desk. That's not who the rulers of the darkness of this world are. All those people sitting in offices, everything from city, town councils, to mayors, senators, governors, to presidents and prime ministers and kings and queens or whatever, are the puppets. It's devils. The rulers of the darkness of this world against spiritual wickedness in high places. That comes from the devil and his devils make up an entire hierarchy of wickedness ruling over this present evil world. That's why I tell you, don't get all wound up about, you know, who gets elected, who doesn't get elected, who gets put in. Okay, the devil's got them all. I mean, seriously, try to get a real born-again Bible-believing Christian, if they were fool enough to get into politics, elected to office. You wouldn't even make it to the ballot. Not going to happen. Not going to happen. And it shouldn't anyways. I'm sorry. If you're a real Bible-believing Christian, okay, you got no business in the stuff going on. We got more important things to do. I'm going to tell you what, and I say this with all sincerity, not one bit of pride, because I know who and what I am, and I know why I'm here and who I serve. But what I'm doing here, right now, at this very minute, is of more value and importance than anything going on in any president, king, or prime minister's office. I wouldn't step down from this. For I've had people try to top me to get into politics. Oh, wait. I ain't got time for that foolishness. This is more important. Because one day, I will be a king. So will you. One day, you're going to have a throne. One day, you're going to be the authority, wherever it is that God puts you, first in Christ's millennial reign, and then out into eternity, and then the new universe that God's going to create. So let them go play their silly games. You stay focused on what's important. Men, I mean mankind, whether they realize it or not, and that's what's even scary. You know, there's folks out there that know that they're serving the devil. Talk about deluded, talk about insanity. They know they're serving the devil. But whether they realize it or not, they are his prisoners. They are his slaves. They are his minions. And he uses them and then laughs when they end up in hell. But he uses them to carry out the wickedness and the sin that goes on in this world. The willingness to resist unto blood in our striving against sin can only be achieved when one grasps the full measure of what was done by our Lord Jesus Christ to pay for and to conquer sin on our behalf. This is why he is indeed the author and the finisher of our faith that we live by. The shedding of blood, the willingness to die resisting against sin is the only sure victory over sin in our mortal lives. The flesh, 1 Corinthians 15:31. That's the first place we've got to fight. 1 Corinthians 15, verse 31, primarily the latter half of that verse. Apostle Paul speaking, "I protest by your rejoicing, which I have in Christ Jesus our Lord. I die daily. I die daily." So should you. Colossians three, five and six. Colossians three, verses five and six. Mortify therefore your members, which are upon the earth. We just read these, okay? Mortify, kill them. Reckon it is dead. Mortify therefore your members, which are upon the earth. Fornication, uncleanness, inordinate affection. Evil concupiscence and covetousness, which is idolatry; for which things sake the wrath of God cometh on the children of disobedience. Romans eight, verses 10 to 13. Paul's got a lot to say about that. Paul ought to know. Romans 10, down to verse 13. And if Christ be in you, the body is dead. Some of our bodies smell like they're dead. The body is dead because of sin. If there's sin in it, it's a dead thing. That's why your newborn spirit and your redeemed soul are alive. Because there's no sin there. And that's why the Holy Spirit of God, again, Colossians 2:11, I repeat it a lot because it's an important doctrine. It's been cut away so it can't affect you. And if Christ be in you, the body is dead because of sin, but the Spirit, capital S, is life because of righteousness. But if the Spirit of Him that raised up Jesus from the dead dwell in you, and He does, He that raised up Christ from the dead shall also quicken your mortal bodies, and He will, by His Spirit that dwelleth in you. We have that promise. One day, this thing's going in the ground, folks. Unless you have to be fortunate enough to be here for the blessed hope, the rapture of the church, okay? One day, okay, they're going to put your body in a box, or they may cremate it, or who knows what happened, you know? You might get blown up somewhere or something, get struck by a lightning. Who knows what will happen to this thing? But one day, it's going to be dead, 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 literally, okay? It needs to be dead spiritually. You need to treat it as a dead thing. Therefore, brethren, we are debtors not to the flesh to live after the flesh; for if you live after the flesh, you shall die. Okay, you're not going to die spiritually, you're not losing your salvation. That's not what it's talking about. But it's sure going to kill your spirituality if you're living for the flesh. But if ye through the Spirit do mortify the deeds of the body, which is what you need to do, you shall live. You're going to live spiritually, and that's the goal. That's what God wants out of you. Forget this thing. Let goods and kindred go, this mortal life also, the body they may kill. Forget this thing, okay? The only good that this thing is to you is how you can make it serve you to serve Jesus Christ. That's it. It's a miserable thing. Fight with it every day. It's going to degrade and decline on you and be a miserable struggle. Get out of it everything you can in serving God. And if you go through mortal death, shout, "Hallelujah, free at last." Uh, Galatians five. In case you didn't know, I don't like the flesh. Just in case I wasn't clear about it. Galatians five, pick it up at 16, we're going to go all the way down to 26. And after that, we'll go back to Ephesians four. Galatians five, verse... And after that, we'll go back to Ephesians four. Galatians five, verse sixteen. "This I say then: lock in the Spirit, and ye shall not fulfill the lusts of the flesh; for the flesh lusteth against the Spirit, and the Spirit against the flesh, and these are contrary the one to the other, so that you cannot do the things that..."